I'd like to call the Order, the Westmont Village Board Meeting of July 15, 2021, at 6 o'clock PM, and ask Clerk Simmski for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunter?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Barker is absent tonight. Trustee Brady?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Trustee Simonovic?
Here.
Attorney Carrera?
Here.
Manager May?
Here.
Assistant Manager Parker?
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone, and the first item is our open forum. And I do have two requests from two individuals, and I think the rest of everybody's here for the same reason. The first one is Dia Rizmini. Is that close, Dia? She's here, 515 North Cass. They're looking for support for the condo units that burned three years ago this Fourth of July, so.
Thank you.
The podium's yours.
Yeah, thank you so much for allowing us to speak here. I'm actually speaking on behalf of my brother-in-law, Rahim Rizmani, who is one of the condo unit owners. He doesn't speak English, so I sat with him and we prepared some remarks ahead of this meeting. So, we are here tonight because we do not know who else to turn to. On July 4th, 2017, there was a fire at my condo building located at 515 North Cass in Westmont, under the Association Royal Vale Condominium Association Care of Union Management Company. All of the units were left destroyed and inhabitable. The condo owners were forced to find new places to live, and were told at that time that it would take up to 18 months to rebuild. The 18 months came and went, and over two years later, now over three years later, the Association Board, represented by attorney James Arigo, brought all of the condo unit owners together on a Zoom meeting to discuss the sale of the building. According to the attorney, the insurance money was not sufficient enough to cover the cost of rebuilding. After two meetings to go over the options of selling or rebuilding with an increase in assessments, on November 1st, 2020, the board decided to sell the building under Section 14, disregarding the input and questions of condo unit owners. At that time, the attorney assured the condo unit owners that this would be a quick process, about six months start to finish. The first and immediate step in the process would be to terminate the association's existence as a condominium and to convert all of the condominium property, including the building and all the units, into non-condominium property owned in common by all unit owners. This has yet to happen even nine months later. Throughout this time and continuing, every condo unit owner has been required to pay their full assessments despite not living there. If they don't pay, they get slapped with a $25 late fee. The building is boarded up, and there are claims that homeless residents have inhabited the property. Throughout these three years, the condo association property manager, Greg Spears, does not respond to phone calls and has not been communicating with the condo owners. There are concerns that Greg, the association board members and attorney are dragging their feet during the Section 14 process. They are using the assessment money to pay for their own legal representation that may not be in the best interest of the condo unit owners. Last year, we contacted WGN News, and they featured our story on the news. We have also written letters to our local congressman and senator. We are feeling helpless and victimized and are reaching out to our village for any support you can provide us as our village leaders. We greatly appreciate any support you can give us.
Thank you. I'll call up Tamara Boinger as the second individual, so we'll have her give her statement.
I'm not going to repeat everything she just said, but, I mean, I'm sure what I've been going through is what other people have gone through. I had to go forbear on my mortgage, that's up, and what's the next step? Foreclosure. I mean, I'm 55 now, and I thought when I was 28, I was established. And I don't want to start all over again at 55. Sorry, I'm nervous. But I just want some answers, because me and my aunt Kathy, we were going around and trying to get to Greg Spears, no answer. Getting the runaround from Omnicom, telling us it's going to be 18 months, and now we're going on three years. Well, it is three years. And we all just wanted to move on with our lives, not just be in the standstill, you know? And I heard from somebody that this lawyer is taking his sweet time to do anything he's doing. I'm doing it on my spare time. Well, how can you do that and play with people's lives like that? You know, we want some answers. And that's pretty much what I want to say.
Well, thank you. And again, your dad was involved years in this community, so I know, we knew him well. What I'd like to do now is call our director, Bruce Sylvester, to give a little recap. You know, I think we all feel the same way, and we feel that we can't even help, but I'll let him do a recap for the board of where this has been and what we've done.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, it's a ridiculously sad situation, and the bottom line, I'll give some details, but the bottom line is there's really very little that the village can do, unfortunately. I just learned some new information myself from the information that you provided. I took some notes, so that's very helpful. What the village can do is just make sure that the property is kept in a safe and reasonably attractive manner, and we've worked with Greg Spears to try to make sure that that happens, and then be patient as the homeowners association and their legal counsel works through this, what appears to me to be a very complicated process through the Section 14 legal process, so that the condominium can be dissolved and the property, I assume, can be sold to a new buyer, and then the renovations can be done. What we did in the past is we expedited reviews and permits so that some emergency measures could be taken right after the fire. We allowed them to re-roof the building so that it didn't get flooded after every rain. We let them do some mold remediation. We issued the permits for that in a quick manner. The contractor hired by the homeowner association submitted plans to renovate the building. We reviewed those plans, we approved those plans, and they were ready for pickup, and we held on to them for 30 months, two and a half years. We typically only hold on to plans for three months, but in an effort to try to just help them and make it as easy as possible, we held on to those plans for 30 months until the beginning of this year, when we contacted their property management representative, Greg Spears, who informed us that they were still working through the battles or the challenges with the insurance companies and the Section 14 process that they were going through. So at that time, we just said we're going to avoid the permit. We gave them back their plans, which have some value, because they can resubmit them later. But those are the plans that we would review and then issue a permit for the actual rehabilitation of the building. But that can't happen until all of these other insurance matters and legal Section 14 matters are resolved. So I know it's not much, I know it doesn't really help, but in terms of what the village government can do, there's not a lot, other than be patient.
And I think we, as a board, we told staff that expedite anything that we get, so we can get, help them in any way we can. I know trustee Brady has asked this, and we've updated the board on this, and we all feel, you know, it's a helpless situation, so.
If anyone on the board or anyone from the condo association has ideas, suggestions, requests, we'd be glad to consider them. We can try to do whatever, you know, is within our authority to do, but again, the bottom line is, other than be patient...
How long do you allow the building to stay in that shape?
Come up to the, I'm sorry, come up to the microphone.
Or I can repeat his question.
Yeah, oh, yeah, he can ask. What's your name and...
My name is Ishmael. I'm a brother of the owner. I spoke to you last year about the building, and I asked you the same question. How long the Village of Westmont will allow that property to be fenced in the heart of the Westmont and stay like that? I mean, obviously, you guys have lawyers here. It's not just the one lawyer, so it must be something the Village of Westmont can do against those, in my opinion, criminals, that Greg Spears is using insurance money, hiring for himself lawyer to defend himself. When we ask the question to that James, whatever his name, Arigo, he does not answer to us because he says he's not hired by us, he's hired by Greg. So, in other words, with our money, assessment money, and everything else, he hires the lawyer and plays the games.
I'll let Bruce...
I don't know what else to ask. I mean, that's...
Yeah, thank you.
So I think I started by saying what we can do is just make sure that the property is safe, you know, with the roof on it and the, any windows that were broken or busted out, keep them boarded up, keep vermin from getting inside there, keep people from getting inside there, basically make sure it's safe. We were asked once if we could issue fines or penalties. Unfortunately, the only ones that that would hurt are ultimately the homeowners, because it's the owners of the property that would receive those fines and those penalties, so we've held off on issuing penalties and fines, because we don't want that to trickle down to the condo unit owners. The idea of the village taking the step of somehow acquiring the building, one, that would probably take longer than the process that you're already in. It takes a very long time for a unit of government to condemn or use eminent domain to take a property, and I'm not convinced, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm not convinced in the end that would have any better result or outcome for the condo unit owners.
Well, like you said about fines, it's the same thing. It just digs that hole deeper, you know, and the net deficit just gets bigger, you know, when that's done, so.
I mean, it's a really, it's a tragic situation. It's difficult.
Do we have another individual showed up that wants to talk to you in open forum? Did you want to say, are you here for open forum or are you here for something on the agenda?
Oh, no, I'm just here to listen.
Oh, okay. You want to observe, okay. I didn't know if you wanted to talk.
You're sorry you sat in the front row.
Yeah, you sat in the front row. There's one more here, ma'am.
I just want to say that they're still charging us assessment fees.
I'm sorry, could you start over?
Hi, my name's Karina. I'm one of the unit owners there at the building. They're still, the assessment, the association is still charging us assessment fees with late fee charges, and it's accumulating, and I stopped paying for it because I'm unemployed at this time, but, you know, it's piling up. I'm over $6,000 in late charges, and they keep sending these letters every month that it's accumulating, and I don't, I don't know, is there something that we can, as unit owners, do about that? Meanwhile, the process gets settled or fixed, or...
I think, again, it's a private matter. I'm surprised that you haven't grouped and hired your own attorney.
We haven't made several attempts to hire attorneys, because this James Arigo lawyer for the association owner, he's kind of a bully, and he's, he says a lot, but doesn't say anything at the same time. They're very strict with what they can say or not. We have, like I said, tried to hire some lawyers. We've all tried to get together and kind of, you know, be one in this situation, but no lawyers want to get involved. They say that this is a really messy situation. It's more of a headache than anything, and we are, this is why we're here now, because we're, at this point, we're very discouraged, we don't know what to do, what to, you know, we just don't, and since our condo is located in Westmont, you know, you guys, you know, it's a great place, and we just want to know where to go and...
I would say your best bet, you need an attorney. I really do. I mean, homeowners, if you're saying this guy is representing just the management company, you've got to have a voice in that, and you're not going to get one unless you've got somebody who's going to file the legal paperwork, unless I'm wrong, but I believe that's what you need. We're not, we don't step on private property to interfere with mortgages or payments or any of that, and it's unfortunate, but we're at a point we can't do anything else than what we've been doing, you know? So I don't know if any trustee have anything. I think we're all concerned. We want it redone, you know, redeveloped or fixed.
I mean, do you guys have any attorneys that are probably affiliated with Westmont that can help us with this situation?
You know, if you could get back to Bruce tomorrow, he could sure give you some names of people that you could contact.
Okay.
But it is up to you to solicit your own counsel. We can't be recommending anybody.
We can just give you names of people that may be in town, or you could go do that, so.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Anything, anybody else? Come on up to you. You could state your name.
I'm Tammy Sagan. I am Tammy's aunt, and she didn't mention, but she is a veteran, and she works two jobs. She works overnight and during the day for her expenses to keep up, because her insurance ran out for her temporary living expenses a year ago, and she's been paying, well, like she said, her mortgage stopped for six months, but she has to pay her mortgage, she has to pay where she's living now, she has to pay the condo assessment, and she's working two jobs and getting nowhere. So when you say to hire an attorney, that sounds great. Like the lady said, they don't want to get involved, it's very messy, but attorneys want to get paid, and they have high rates. Now you talk about 20 families or 20 owners already stretched financially to their limits, and it's a very difficult situation there. One thing that I heard, and I was not aware of, that there was a decision to sell the building, because I don't know if a village can determine that a building is uninhabitable or what that is considered. It's obvious to me that it is. There's no, there's no walls in some places, there's mold cover up and a blank space, and if that was the case, it is possible, for example, in Tammy's case, that if she could say they are selling the building and it's uninhabitable, it is possible she might be able to get insurance money for her unit so that she could go on with her life and make another decision going forward. But she has to, and I can certainly talk to her insurance about that, she has to know that that building is finished. Now, the thing about insurance companies arguing about everything, if in fact that it was going to be sold, then there's really no argument, because Tammy's money's tied up in the fact that they're waiting to rebuild it. Her money, this is how much we're going to give you, this is what we're going to provide, this is, these are the cabinets, this is the flooring, blah, 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 fine. But if you're not going to, then we're going to give you the money. So it's just that junction. So I don't know what it would require for saying that it was uninhabitable, but it is something that I think might help some of the owners go on with their lives, particularly if they're eventually going to sell it and have someone else take over anyway.
Thank you. Bruce, you, why don't you quickly respond to that? I know that when this situation happened, and I sort of hearing about, my son was in a condo in Chicago, and I told him, you better look into some things, but...
I mean, the building is uninhabitable currently, and if you need some documentation to that effect, we can certainly provide you. It is uninhabitable. The assumption and everything I've heard is that the intent, though, is to restore it. It's just that costs a lot of money, and the question is, how do those expenses get paid more?
Okay. Chief, Chief Riley, our Fire Department chief?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to explain that that night, I was out there, and I was in charge of the whole operation, and that building was uninhabitable from the moment that the fire was extinguished. That is in the report. Numerous of the owners FOIA'd that report, a Freedom of Information Act, and it says that it was uninhabitable in that report and along in the fire investigation report. So this building truly has been inhabitable, uninhabitable, since July 4th of 2018, the night of that fire. So that is in my documentation in my report, which would maybe help you with your insurance company, so. That could go back a long way, but also, as Director Sylvester says, he can give you documentation on a village letterhead as well as I can, to say that this building is down since July 4th of 2018, if that will help you to go back to your...
Thanks.
To go back.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, I think staff will work with you any way we can. I think Bruce has been available. I think every one of us feels terrible, but we're obligated. We can't go on private property and get involved in attorneys and insurance companies. So at this point, if no one else has anything, I will close open forum and move on to reports. Thank you. My report is first, and today, this morning, I had an opportunity to celebrate with one of our Cordia residents her 100th birthday. And she's living at Cordia, she's sharp as a tack, she's, we had a great time. Larry McIntyre and myself went there today. She had her son and daughter-in-law and some of the staff, and we videotaped it, and we want to show it, but unfortunately, we're not going to get the sound in here, but it will carry across YouTube. So if Glenn's ready, we can at least show the celebration today. Today is her birthday.
I'm Ron Gunter, the mayor of the Village of Westmont. I'm here today to celebrate your 100th birthday, and I brought with me a proclamation that will be officially approved tonight, recognizing your 100th birthday. Whereas Ruth Fass is a new resident of Westmont, and her family has lived in Westmont for decades, and whereas following World War II, Ruth's brother Louis and then her parents moved to Westmont and were active members of our community, and whereas the family home on Hudson Street was the gathering place that created the need for Ruth to learn to drive a car, and whereas Westmont of the past is part of Ruth's family story, and whereas Westmont in 2021 is Ruth's current home at Cordia Senior Residence, which we're here today, and whereas Ruth is celebrating her 100th birthday along with Westmont celebrating its centennial, and now therefore I, Ronald J. Gunter, mayor of Westmont, wish to honor Ruth Fass on behalf of the village board and all our residents for her long-life prosperity and the family connections that she has to our community. It's to be passed tonight by my board at our board meeting this evening at Village Hall. So I'd like to present you this proclamation, and along with that, I want to give you the key to the city, or the key to our village. Congratulations, happy birthday. So I think we want to, of course, this is Ruth, we all know Ruth, so I think we want to go around and introduce each other.
I'm Katie Duda. I'm the activities program director here at Cordia Senior Residence.
Hi, I'm Teresa Ravalla, and the executive director.
I'm Erineth Bass, Ruth's daughter-in-law, 40 years.
I'm Kenneth Bass. I am the son of Ruth Bass, who carried me in one of the hottest summers in the United States. I heard Skilling say this year ago, 1947, it was 100 degrees, there was warmer conditioning, and I was born in October. So think of what she went through during the summer of '47.
I'm Shelley, marketing director here at Cordia.
And happy birthday. Happy birthday, Ruth.
And unfortunately, we didn't have the sound in here, but it was a great celebration. That was her son and daughter-in-law, and she did ask me what that key opened, so I told her my office. I'm on the cameras. All right, in conjunction with 100th anniversary, I thought it was appropriate. We tried to get her here, it's just unfortunate, I think, with the transportation, it wasn't going to work out. The Police Public Safety Committee, the next one will be September 22nd, 9 o'clock, right here in the morning. National Night Out Police Open House is Tuesday, August 3rd, from 5 to 8 o'clock at the police station. There will be facility and vehicle tours, kids' events, and food prepared by our own Lions Club. McGruff and Radar, the remote control squad car, will also be there. We had a 100th anniversary committee meeting prior to this meeting, and we're gearing up for our birthday celebration on November 10th. That's the actual day, it's on a Wednesday night. We are going to have some dedications. It looks like right now the James Addington Plaza will be, originally was going to be done in September. I think we're going to hold off till November 10th, dedicate it that evening. We're also going to have the time capsule burial, which will be in the plaza, since we, it's been, it'll be relocated. The one that was in 1976, we haven't opened it, and then the new one we're going to bury for the 100th will be buried next door. So that ceremony will be that evening. We plan on having a lot of different events. The 4th of July fireworks were tremendous at Tyawonner Park. They added a little oomph to it for the 100th, and I think everybody who witnessed it knew it was a great event, so. And again, the park was packed, so the park had... Are we a mask in the time capsule? Are we, a mask? I think we're going to put a lot of things in that time capsule that reflect what we've been through and items that were given away. So the 100th anniversary license plates are now on sale to the public. Again, they're only, the cost is $25. They're good for October and November, 60 days, and you could display them. I think all our municipal vehicles will have them. And again, I want to congratulate, and I know trustee Little will talk about it more, our volunteers. Not only our volunteers for every Thursday night, the same Westmont Special Event Corp, but they were able to put together the Taste in less than two months. From when the governor gave us the authorization, it took three weeks to put cruising lights together and less than two months to put the Taste. It was beautiful, a vet, volunteers were out mass. Unfortunately, it rained a little bit, but I think everybody had a great time, and I want to congratulate those volunteers. And I'll turn to Clerk Simmski.
I just want to remind everybody that the community-wide garage sale will be the weekend of August 6th, 7th, and 8th. To sign up and participate, visit the village website. And I just want to follow up on what you said, the fireworks. My little three-year-old granddaughter cheered after every one of them and watched that sky for the next one. She didn't bat an eye, she just cheered all night long. She thought it was fabulous. She had a wonderful time. And the Taste, I thought, was good. I mean, really good. With the weather as horrible as it was, the carnival made money, I mean, everybody really came out much better than I thought we would. So I'm proud of all the workers and the carnival people and their brave attitude towards everything. It was terrific, so that's all I have.
Well, thank you. I'm going to turn to trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things tonight, before the board meeting, we had our regularly scheduled Public Works Committee, and just a few big things, we just, we had a resident here discussing a heritage reordinance relating to their sidewalk project and driveway. We hopefully came to a resolution to be able to help them out and make the project happen. We'll be voting on that in a couple of weeks. Our Public Works Director, Mike Ramsey, also discussed this new water ambassador program, which Westmont will be a gold ambassador level, which is kind of cool. So more to come on that, but this is kind of phase one. That Mike's going to make sure that we get through and hopefully continue doing that. We also congratulated a great employee, Josh... We also congratulated a great employee, Josh Crowell, on his 20th anniversary here. Good employee that's not only driving around in Jimmy Wright's truck, but also is following in his footsteps. It sounds like he's doing a great job. So thanks, Mike, for keeping at it with him. We appreciate all his efforts. Also, a quick update on Liberty Park. Mike Ramsey, while as the county, have been looking and talking with the residents about potentially bringing drinking water in there. So right now, the county is surveying the residents, and if there's interest, we'll take it, meaning more of the residents want to do it. We'll kind of... The village and the county will take it to the next step in a live meeting. So appreciate the efforts there. Still waiting on permits with the Village Fueling Center. Hopefully, that's going to be starting soon. And then we talked about a few alley projects. Alley D, which is Burlington and Irving, just east of Cass, is almost done. Hopefully, in the next couple of days, we'll see that wrap up. Again, just east side of Cass, between Burlington and Irving. Check it out. They look remarkable from what it was. And then we had a quick recap on Taste of Westmont, a few other items, but those were the major points. Just a reminder, mark your calendars. Public Works is planning an open house September 25th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Details are going to come out here pretty soon. And I'm sure Trustee Little will mention this, but on July 22nd is Public Works Night at our Cruising Nights, so please come out. I know our department does a good job in getting all of the departments there with a lot of equipment, and it's always a lot of fun for the kids. Of course, the fireworks are great, although this year I wasn't serving beer in the tent. We got to watch them from our house. And I know Frank filled in for me at the beer tent. Him and Carol did a good job. So thanks, Frank, for doing that. And a special thanks to the Westmont Special Events. On Friday, I was at the Taste, and although the rest of the weekend was terrible, the weather-wise, Friday was beautiful. It was 75 and sunny. And I got there a little early, and I remember seeing Trustee Little and Larry. And, you know, obviously, we thank all the volunteers, and they do a great job. And you meet people from different villages that come in, the gentleman I was working with in the beer tents from Mullerbrook, him and his wife. So... But seeing Linda and Larry, like, before it all started, I mean, every second the radio went off, it was a question for Larry. You had Linda kind of juggling so many things. I mean, the amount of effort that they put in, and I know it's so many others, but it's just kind of cool. And, you know, it was packed Friday. I mean, I've never seen it that busy. This South Beer Tent, where this little stage was, I thought it was an awesome setup. I mean, residents they haven't seen in years, literally a couple of years, coming out fist pumping and just happy to be there. So I, you know, it was perfect. You know, I don't care if there's any complaints or nothing. I thought it was just nice to be out there. And so appreciative of all the extra efforts that I know Larry and Linda and Christina and the whole organization do, and of course, the volunteers. But it's just nice to be able to have that, because no other towns really have the fest, and we're one of the few. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. And Sam, and we can go on and on and on and name all the people. So we're going to turn to Trustee Little to give us some additional information.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next Administration Finance Committee meeting will be held August the 12th at 4:30 in this room. So come out for that one if you're interested. A Taste of Westmont recap, a very special thank you goes out to the Westmont Special Events Board, which is made up of volunteers who work throughout the year to make sure that certain events, like the Taste of Westmont, the cruising nights, and many more activities happen. A huge thank you goes out to the many volunteers who came out to serve beer, to help out at the info tent, to put wristbands on the kids at the carnival. We just had a great time, and they... Whether you gave me three hours, or six hours, or two hours, it was all very much appreciated. Our volunteers are one in a million, and I really... We really do appreciate them. A special thank you has to go out to the Public Works in the Park District, both for the many hours of setup and tearing down, because that was really hard labor, and that's something that I didn't want to get involved in. A lot of other things, but not that one. And a very special thank you goes out to our top-level corporate and platinum sponsors, including the village of Westmont, Kim Heller at Baird &amp; Warner, Napleton Porsche in Westmont, Kira Leaf, and Neat Kitchen &amp; Bar. Westmont Special Events still needs volunteers to help out with additional events throughout the remainder of the year. We certainly have cruising nights, which will be held from 5 till 9 every Thursday night through September the 2nd. If you want to be a volunteer or a sponsor, contact Westmont Special Events at WSEC@westmondevets.com, or call us at 630-829-9378. There's four more art shows at cruising nights this year. Sign up now to participate. More information on the village website. And Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I'm going to turn to this side, and Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things. First, I do want to say kudos to everyone involved with the Taste. I unfortunately had to miss 4th of July because my husband is recuperating from some surgery, but I heard it was wonderful. I heard that they said, "Happy Birthday, Westmont", in the fireworks, I believe. So kudos for that. And I do want to say a special thank you again for Westmont Special Events. It's been a long year and a half, and it was nice to see people out we haven't seen in a year and a half. And that in itself, I think, was a great accomplishment, because I think we've all had pandemic fever, and it was just great. So thank you to everyone for that. And then our next Fire Public Safety Committee meeting will be on October 21st at 4:30 here in the Village Hall. And then Cruising Nights, Fire Truck Night is August 5th. I hope to see everyone there. And thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Brady.
Regarding the Westmont Chamber of Commerce, the next ribbon cutting ceremony will be for a company called Good Juju Yoga. It's scheduled for Thursday, August 12th, from 3:00 to 3:30. They're located at 245 North Cass. Also, the Center for Dance will have a new owner and name in August. The new name is Artistic Pursuit, and the new owner is Ashley Payne. The ribbon cutting is scheduled for August 19th, from 11:30 to noon. They're located at 226 North Cass. I'd just like to make a mention about the 4th of July event. I would say it was well organized, very safe. The police and fire department were prepared for anything to happen, and I think that it was well managed by the Westmont Park District and all the volunteers. It was really... As we know, it was a good turnout. Very festive and proud to be part of Westmont. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Simonovic.
I agree with Frank. I really enjoyed the 4th of July celebration. That was actually our first time attending that, and the kids really loved the fireworks. We let them stay up extra late for that. And I also volunteered pouring some beer for a while, and that was a fun experience as well. So all in all, a wonderful event. And I know the kids really liked the Taste of Westmont rides, although I missed it myself, but I saw some great pictures of the kids getting some rides in on Thursday when the weather was still nice. So I want to just remind everyone that the community... I'm sorry, that the village is hiring. And we can... You can find the applications on the Westmont website. And we are still hiring for the Deputy Director of Community Development and Planning, the Forester Intern. And with regards to the other positions that we identified last meeting, we are in various stages of the hiring process for the Permit Coordinator, the Administrative Assistant to the Fire Chief, the Help Desk Technician, and the Mechanic in the Public Works Department. So thank you for all the applicants for that.
Thank you. Moving on the agenda, a public hearing. Fiscal Year 2021-22 Appropriations Ordinance. Board to conduct a public hearing for the fiscal year. And now it turns to Assistant Village Manager Parker to give some information before I open that public hearing.
All right. So just a brief note on the process. So this was discussed in more depth at a committee of the Administration Finance Committee of the Village Board, so there's more discussion at that point. But in general, this is the next step in the process. This is where the board is actually authorizing the village to spend money for the fiscal year. And it's based on the budget. We usually do... We start with a 20% increase and then make some additional adjustments up or down, depending on potential things that may or may not come up. And really, this is where the village has the spending authority to be able to spend money for the rest of the fiscal year. It needs to get approved this month, and then it'll be submitted to the county. So the first step of that is the public hearing, where the public can comment on this. That's legally required. And then the next step later on in the meeting will be the village board actually approving it. So the grand total of the appropriations that's being proposed is $112,176,460. And of that, about $3 million of that is from the library. The library has its separate board, which approves their own appropriation. And based on case law, the village just passes on and can only approve our appropriation based on what the library board has already appropriated. So Library Director Julia Cohen's here, in case there are any public comments or public questions, or any questions from the board about that $3 million portion.
And at this point, I am going to open it for a public hearing. Anybody got a... Any trustee? Nobody has a library question? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move on to items to be removed from the consent agenda. Does anybody have an item they'd like removed? Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to please read the consent agenda.
Thank you. On the consent agenda this evening, starts with Village Board Minutes. Board to consider a motion to accept, approve, and release the following executive session minutes, with the exceptions as noted. Those being October 26, 2017, December 7, 2017, February 1, 2018, March 15, 2018, April 12, 2018, May 24, 2018, January 3, 2019, February 28, 2019, August 15, 2019, February 13, 2020, January 14, 2021, March 25, 2021, except for paragraph number four, and lastly, April 22, 2021. Next, our board is to consider a motion approving the minutes of the regular village board meeting held July 1, 2021. And following that is the Finance Ordinance, number six, in the aggregate amount of $1,934,956.97. We have one purchase order, Motorola Solutions Incorporated, $36,865.50, Starcom, representing Starcom Mobile Radio Replacement. Together, the purchase order with the Finance Ordinance amounts to $1,971,822.47. Next, we have some Hotel Motel Grant requests. First one is the Park District for Concerts in the Park. Board to consider a motion awarding the Hotel Motel Grant in the amount of $2,500 to the Westmont Park District for Concerts in the Park events. Next grant request is Westmont Park District Haunted Forest. Board to consider a motion awarding the Hotel Motel Grant in the amount of $2,500 to the Westmont Park District for the Haunted Forest event. Next Hotel Motel Grant request, Park District Holidays. Board to consider a motion awarding Hotel Motel Grant in the amount of $5,000 to the Westmont Park District to assist in holidays. And I'll only just comment here that the amount is different, because the village is also a participant in the... in that event. And lastly is the proclamation. Board to consider a proclamation to honor Cordia resident Ruth Fats as she celebrates her 100th birthday. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve as read?
Motion to approve as read, Little.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second. To approve, any comments? I do have to say, the grants are consistent with what we've done in the past.
Yes.
We didn't have any last year. And the holidays is really a community event, including the village, the library, the park district, schools, Lions Rotary. So...
I'd like to add to that, and it's just good for perspective. If it's on the consent agenda, a requirement is that it's a consistent, you know, repeated event. So if there was something different or unique about it substantively, you know, from a previous year, then it would be a new business item. So...
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'd ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Moving on to new business, fiscal year 2021-22 Appropriations Ordinance. Spencer talked a little bit about this, but we're board to consider ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2021-22 appropriation ordinance. Anything else to add? Assistant Village Manager Parker?
Nothing else to add unless there are questions from the board.
Then I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Guzzo. Second, Little.
Motion made in second. To approve, any comments from anybody? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business B, an engineering agreement, 2021 Phase 1 and 2, designed for the Burlington Avenue realignment project. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. Board to consider an ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with Thomas Engineering LLC for design of Phase 1 and Phase 2 of engineering services for Burlington Avenue realignment project. This realignment is East Burlington Avenue in intersection of Cass and Burlington. It's allowed for a new development that's going to be going in at One North Cass Avenue. The request is to approve a sum of $65,550 for the design of the Phase 1 and 2 engineering for the Burlington project. Staff does recommend this proposal. This is something that we had proposed before COVID, and now we're getting back to where we're, you know, going to be doing this project. So that's why it's being brought back again. It was brought up again before in 2019, but it was put on hold, and now we're moving forward with the project.
Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made second. Comments? Again, this is in conjunction with the One North Cass project.
Correct, gas curve, yeah, correct.
Yeah, realigning the road. But this realignment, or any of the development, we're not looking to start till next year.
Right. This is designed services, so that we do that through the fall and the winter and be ready to go out to bed first thing in the spring. And I will also add, just because it's come up before, but this also includes the traffic signal remodeling services in the intersection, so we can finish that.
Great. Any other...
At Cass.
Seeing no question... Other questions? I'd ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business C, network security agreement with ThinkGuard. Board to consider ordinance approving a network security agreement with ThinkGuard. And I'm going to turn to Manager May.
I would. Glenn was ready to present this himself, but the board's to consider... Well, you read the ordinance. ThinkGuard provides the network security services and the support for the products and the equipment that we already own, but this is the annual amount for security services and support.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second. To approve, any comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business D, Darien Woodridge Fire Protection District, mutual aid agreement. Board to consider ordinance approving an automatic aid agreement between the village of Westmont through its fire department and Darien Woodridge Fire Protection District. Chief Riley.
Thank you, Mayor. So as I talked about at Public Safety back last month of June, these are the auto aid agreements that we have with the five surrounding communities. Two of these are coming before you this evening, and the next three will be on the board agenda for two weeks from tonight. These are being updated through the attorney since 2014, really for accreditation and ISO purposes, and these actually date back to 1989. So just looking to get approval to update some language that the attorney touched.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Guzzo. Second, Simonovic.
Motion made in second. Comments? Again, this is something that's been in place for years. It's just updating. So good.
So a certain fire chief started this back in 1989.
I wonder who that fire chief would be.
I only wonder.
Good man he is.
I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes. Motion passes, and we'll go to New Business E, Tri-State Fire Protection District, mutual aid agreement. Chief Riley.
Same thing, Mayor. This is the second one. Tri-state, again, auto aid agreement, everything I just mentioned.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Guzzo.
Second, Simonovic.
Motion made in second. This is two out of the five.
Yes, sir.
So we still have three more.
Three more in two weeks.
Okay.
Before you.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to miscellaneous, does anybody have any items that they'd like to mention before we adjourn to get out to Cruising Nights?
He doesn't work here anymore. Miscellaneous.
All right, now, I have just a comment or ask a question to Manager May.
Great.
Block parties' permission to use the, any public property, are we still not authorizing those, or are we giving?
No, the, so block parties and then garage sales. So the garage sales do not require a permit. The purpose of the Village, why garage sale was to, for the benefit of everybody aggregating and attracting that attention to your neighborhood all at the same time. Block parties are still not permitted insofar as closing the road or promoting the gathering as well as the, in a different year, there would be requests for visits by the public safety departments, and we're continuing the same COVID protocols through the remainder of this year.
Okay. I just thought I'd mention it so the public can hear it. Anybody else? Did I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Little.
Second.
Motion made second. To adjourn the meeting, I, roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.[1763.94]